Led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Struble.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this evening to perform city business. We ask for your guidance for us and our staff as we continue to keep Apache Junction a great place to live, work, operate a business, and raise a family. We also want to express our support for Odessa, Texas, and the families and friends to everyone affected by this person that formed this troubleshooting. Stand with the families and friends of victims of this event. Give the families and friends of the deceased your hand and strength as they celebrate their lives. We also express our concern and support to everyone that is being affected by this wonderful storm on the east coast. Keep them all safe. Again, we ask for your continued oversight of us as we work together for the overall best for our community in the Lord's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
I have a statement that I'm going to read before we get started. I'd like to make a statement at this time regarding the notice residents and non-residents alike received a couple of weeks ago related to the solid waste contract. The city did not send that notice out. The discussion on further terms and research will continue at the next meeting, possibly after that. Discussion, research, and process began over a year ago. On June 10th, the city received a request for proposal for residential solid waste trash service. The RFP closed on July 11th, in which the city received three proposals. Council reviewed all bids at the August 6 council meeting and directed staff to enter into negotiations with the lowest qualified bidder. There is no item on tonight's agenda for discussion as the reference letter indicated. At a future council meeting, City Council will consider a contract with the lowest qualified bidder. I would also like to remind everyone that if you want to speak tonight, you must fill out a request to speak, and they're out there on the table out there, and hand them into Anna over here before we get to the city manager's report. And with that, I will ask if we have any, and then if you fill those out, just hand those in. We already have about 10 up here, and that'll be at the end of the meeting. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the fiscal year 2019, 2020 city council work plan be adopted, that the contract for the slurry seal of Old West Highway and portions of Southern and Tomahawk be awarded to Southwest Slurry Seal through Pinell County Contract Number ROQ 175923 in the amount of $426,998.86 plus a 10% contingency for unforeseen change orders in the amount of $42,699.88 for a total project cost not to exceed $469,698.74, and that the contract for the slurry seal of Apache Villa and Ironwood Cove subdivisions be awarded to Regional Pavements through Mojave Cooperative Contract Number 14Y-RPMA-0317 in an amount of $232,288.58 plus a 10% contingency for unforeseen change orders in the amount of $23,228.85 for a total project cost not to exceed $255,517.43.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, 7-0.
I have a proclamation or Child Passenger Safety Week, whereas children are our future and it is the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for children ages 1 to 13, and whereas research shows that car seats reduce the risk of fatal injury for infants by 71% and by 54% for toddlers in cars, and by 58% and 59% for infants and toddlers in SUVs, pickups, and vans, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 12 and under always ride in the backseat, buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15th, 2019, through September 21st, 2019, as Child Passenger Safety Week in Apache Junction, and urge all citizens to work together to keep our children, passengers, safe. Do we have any announcements of current events? Anyone? Robin.
I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that the entire council went to the League of Cities Conference two weeks ago, which is why we missed that meeting. It was an incredible conference. I think we all learned a lot. We heard some very good speakers, learned some new tricks of the trade, heard from cities around the state, found out that some of the things that we thought were a big problem here are nothing compared to some of the problems some of those cities have. Met a lot of wonderful people, and it was very worthwhile, I think, for us to have attended that conference. I enjoyed it.
Robert.
I second that.
Krista.
I have a couple of comments to make off of that in conjunction with Robin, our attendance of the annual conference. It's always a great networking and learning experience when we go. We get to meet people from other cities, like Robin had shared. But I had a little bit different experience that I would like to share. This is the second time I've attended a conference where I've had a hip replaced. And in doing that, it was immediately after surgery, I needed assistance in walking. I wasn't able to walk without using a walker and a scooter, which brought some very interesting challenges and some things that I learned as people who are handicapped and have to live in a scooter or wheelchair or walk with additional devices might have to go through on a regular basis. And it was interesting because a different council member, I wish I had made note of the city, a gentleman had walked up to me and probably assumed that I was in a scooter permanently, asked me how the facilities was treating handicapped and how it accommodated the handicap. It was an eye-opener, and again, it was a really, it was a very interesting learning experience for what people actually have to go through. And one of the things that he had commented on is that their city council, and I think I mentioned this before, their city council actually did a challenge where each council member spent one day going around in a wheelchair in their community, whether they had to go to appointments, doctor's offices, or whatnot. And they brought that experience back to a city council meeting and talked about it. And actually, that community ended up, they were ADA compliant, you know, they had the different handicap parking spaces and several things in the city and in the community that were providing for handicap, but they learned that there was a lot of things that they didn't have, and they ended up actually making quite a few changes. And so it was, again, it was a real eye-opener, and it's something that I would be interested in passing through to the other council members to see if it's something that they would ever want to take on as a challenge, just to see how we rate as a community, as a city, for our handicapped and to make sure that we're taking care of those people the best that we can. I appreciate the time to share that.
Jeff.
Yeah. So I got a couple of things. First of all, we're starting the process again this year for the third annual AJ Kids Idol. We're going to be holding it the last weekend of January. Still working out the venue on that one, but we will be sending out information to all the school-aged children in our community to let them know if they have any talents that they want to show off, and we will be doing that, having some auditions and stuff. So any of you parents who have kids from kindergarten through 12th grade that might have a talent, be looking for that when they bring it home in their school backpack. And we'll be doing advertisements and stuff like that, too. But like I say, it's going to be the last weekend of January, and it's going to be a great event. The second thing is, is that on September 14th, we're going to be celebrating the United States Constitution at Flatiron Park from 3 to 6, and invite everybody to come out. We've got some speakers, we have some singers, we have an essay contest throughout the, well, each of our schools has had an essay contest, and we're going to have the kids read their essays, and we have some local speakers and such things. We have some singers. We have a young lady who's going to be doing the National Anthem, that is, just talked to her, she's very nervous about it, but I assured her that she can do better than I could, so whatever that means. But just put that on your calendar, it's going to be a great event. Come out and bring your chair, your blanket, and enjoy the time. The third thing is, and I didn't realize that October was Suicide Prevention Month, but suicide, it's one of those things that you sometimes don't pay attention to until it hits really close to home. And just want to make it aware for people out there that if you're going through something, it's probably not something that's, it's something that somebody else has gone through, and then people can help you walk through the process, walk through the situation that you're in, and you're not alone. We have up here the suicide hotline in case, it's 1-800-273-8255. It's something that hits our young people, you know, it's amazing, it's the, one of the top, it's one of the top things that our children from 15 to 25 die of, and then obviously our veterans that have to go through some situations and stuff. So just be aware of that. That's something that you guys, that everybody can be aware of, and don't be afraid to talk to somebody if you even have an inkling that there might be something wrong, make sure you just go talk to them. It's better to make, get them mad at you if they're not something wrong than to think that maybe you should have, so thank you.
Dale.
Just one thing to bounce off of what Councilmember Struble just said. The council, in our last go-around for our Health and Human Services, we allotted $15,000 to Horizon Health and Wellness for education of the educators in our local schools to help identify kids sooner if possible, so the sooner the better. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
I have one more thing I'd like to mention. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the people who took the time to pick up the phone and call, read this trash letter that you got. A lot of people realized that there was some misinformation there, and part of that misinformation, kind of fun, is that Mayor Sertie and I had the city phone number instead of our personal number. So while everyone else was getting all of these phone calls, Mayor Sertie and I were looking at one another like, what's going on? And then we found out all those calls went through Anna, thank you very much, and Jill. But I, it's really important that you participate in your government, so thank you for taking that time to speak with somebody and ask your questions.
Mayor Sertie, I see one more thing. I'd like to thank everybody also that took the time to call because even though that letter was negative and it upset people horribly, I had an opportunity to talk to over 50 people that were upset at the beginning, and by the time I explained the whole letter, I got an opportunity to speak to some people that I otherwise wouldn't. And out of 50-plus phone calls, sometimes the phone was ringing and I was still on the other phone, the other call. I only had one that was, I think she might have been having too much fun, actually, before she made the phone call, but it's just my guess. But other than that, I really enjoyed all the conversations I had, and thank you all.
I'm going to say it was interesting conversations with some people. And I, I received over 120 emails and approximately about, I counted 80 telephone calls, and it gave an opportunity, for the most part, for my responses and aspect on it. There was a few that did not want to hear it, and even had one person that hung up on me while I was trying to talk to him. Unfortunately, I had one person that wanted to keep on talking and talking and talking, and I was in, over at Harbor Freight, and I was up at the cash register, and I told her, I said, I need to go, and she kept on talking. Finally, I just said, I got to hang up, and I unfortunately had to hang up on her. Looked at the time, I spent 14 minutes with her phone, with her. So there's been a lot of conversations. We definitely appreciate the information, and hopefully a lot of you took what we had to say and understood what was going on.
And while my wrong phone number did go out, everybody knows where I am during the day, so I talked to a lot of people in person, so. I want to remind everybody, and I've got a lot of new people to hear this tonight, 2022 is the centennial of the Founder's Day of Apache Junction. In 1922 is when the Curtis family put down their roots here in Apache Junction. So we want to make all of 2022 a year-long celebration for that centennial, and there's a, a committee has formed, and we're still taking volunteers, and it meets the first Thursday of every month, and that's this Thursday at the library at 6 o'clock. If you go in the library, walk all the way to the back, and you'll see a room there with a glass wall, and we could probably find something for somebody to do, and we're looking for new ideas, and we want to make 2022 a really awesome year. And of course, we received word just in the last couple of days that after the fire, the Apache Trail is finally open. I'm eager to go look and see, you know, I guess 75% of the interior is burned up, and hopefully it doesn't look that bad, and I hope to drive the whole thing and see it, so. Moving on to our business, consideration of, oh, city manager's report.
There you go. Skip right over.
Yes.
Just wanted to highlight one item from the League of Cities and Towns Conference that is so important in terms of service to our community. As part of the conference, one of the parts is they highlight to all elected officials across the state, numbers of years of service. So congratulations tonight goes to Councilmember Robin Barker for 20 years of service. There you are. And to Mayor Sertie and Vice Mayor Chip Wilson for 12 years of service.
I have my head on it.
You were all recognized by your mayor, by your peers, and what a great honor, and we just wanted to recognize you here with us in our, in our form tonight. And I also congratulate you for, thank you for your service. That concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Consideration of application for a special event liquor license for Steve Miller of the Zane Gray Friends of the NRA organization to be held at Superstition Harley-Davidson on September 21st. Is, is the applicant here? Would they like to say anything? I don't see any, but I am aware of this group, and it is a very worthwhile cause, and the money stays here locally. A lot of people don't like the NRA, but it doesn't go back to them, it stays here to help educate kids. So we don't have any questions of the applicant? Any discussion among council? This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the application for a special liquor license for the Zane Gray Friends of NRA organization for September 21st, 2019, submitted by Steve Miller, recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yep.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation, discussion, and public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 1479 related to zoning case PZ 5-19 for corrective rezoning between Ironwood and Greasewood, Sidney.
Good evening, Council. My name is Nick Love Dutch. I'm a planning intern at the Development and Services Department. Today, I just have, oh, do I?
See.
Wasn't sure who had that, if it was.
Oh, yeah, let's not jump to that.
Did public art up there?
What's that?
Let's reel that in.
It's a PDF. I want to be PDFs right now.
Wrong one.
There it is. I think that's it. Good evening. I just have a brief presentation regarding the corrective rezoning of five acres on Greasewood and Ironwood. One of the property owners had previously brought to our attention that his property had had its zoning designation inadvertentlyly changed when the city adopted its new zoning ordinance in 2014 to a new restrictive, to a new, more restrictive zone. And the staff did research and found that four of these lots of one and a quarter acre were all previously zoned general rural and had been inadvertently changed to medium-density single-family residential, or RS 20M. The proposed ordinance simply corrects this zoning to allow for more appropriate use of their properties in the RSGR, the general rural, low-density, single-family district, which is just the correlation to the old general rural district. And as a standard for rezoning, the city just requests that the dedication of the federally patented easements become city's right-of-way. On August 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of the rezoning, and three out of the four property owners came to that hearing, and they all voiced support for the project as well. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
They do. Just a quick question. So with the general rural, that'll stay general rural? If the property sells, will it still be general rural, or does it change to something else?
No, it will stay general rural. We are zoning that district, that area, to the zoning of general rural.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Well, we need you to come to the microphone and tell us name and address.
Okay. Hi, my name is Stacy Jones. I hate giving out my address due to my.
Just the city.
It's, I live here in Apache Junction, and I just have a question on exactly what general rural means. A little clarification.
So the city has different zoning designations, all divided by lot sizes, and some basic differences like that. General rural is a lot size minimum of one acre, or an acre, acre and a quarter? Acre and a quarter. Currently, the RS 20M lot size is about 20,000 square feet. So the general rural, or the, the general rural designation, with that lot size standard of an acre and a quarter, has different setbacks, which allows people to build in different areas of their lot. A smaller zoning designation, such as RS 7 or the current RS 20M, is designed to be for smaller, smaller lots, and so the houses would be in different locations based on that lot. And that also changes accessory building locations and setbacks, as well as certain regulations. So general rural is the most broad.
Most flexible.
Most flexible, kind of reserved for those rural areas of the city, or the areas that were traditionally with those lot sizes. And so it just is a lot that contains the zoning code appurtenant to that kind of lot size.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion, and this will be a title-only motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1479 related to rezoning case PZ 5-19 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Matt, do we have the air down as low as it'll go?
I'll verify.
98-degree bodies are raising the temperature in here. Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of ordinance number 1480 related to zoning case PZ 4-19, proposed rezoning of approximately 4.14 acres at Apache Trail and Thunderbird.
Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is Sidney Ryus, planner on staff. Like you said, I will be giving a presentation on Dutch Brothers Coffee, PZ 419. The project is located on the northeast corner of Apache Trail and Thunderbird Drive. Here you have the aerial map in front of you. The applicant has purchased the four parcels that are highlighted. Current zoning on the project is B2 plan development. The original plan development was approved by council years and years ago. With this new request, they're going to update the plan development but keep the same B2 zoning. The request that, for that is then, the rezoning of approximately 4.4 acres to facilitate, facilitate a Dutch Brothers coffee shop and future commercial.
I move that ordinance number 1479, as read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Matt, do we have the air down as low as it'll go?
I'll verify.
Ninety-eight degree bodies are raising the temperature in here. Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of ordinance number 1480 related to zoning case PZ 4-19, proposed rezoning of approximately 4.14 acres at Apache Trail and Thunderbird, Thunderbird.
Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is Sidney Ryus, planner on staff. Like you said, I will be giving a presentation on Dutch Brothers Coffee, PZ 419. The project is located on the northeast corner of Apache Trail and Thunderbird Drive. Here you have the aerial map in front of you. The applicant has purchased the four parcels that are highlighted. Current zoning on the project is B2 plan development. The original plan development was approved by council years and years ago. With this new request, they're going to update the plan development, but keep the same B2 zoning. The request that, for that is then, the rezoning of approximately 4.4 acres to facilitate, facilitate a Dutch Brothers Coffee shop and future commercial development on the adjacent parcels. Here we have the site plan that the applicant provided us. Dutch Brothers is being proposed to be located on the hard corner of Apache Trail and Thunderbird Drive. The other two parcels, the parcel to the east here, and the parcel to the north, are to remain vacant and developed at a later time. Here we have the zoomed-in version of the site plan along with the landscape plan. Customers will be able to access the location, Dutch Brothers Coffee, either through Apache Trail or Thunderbird Drive here through the entrances, and either park or locate through the double drive-through there, and then exit accordingly as well. The applicant has provided herself applications as part of this, as part of his request. They are noting stucco, cement fiberboard, and stone base at the bottom of the building. Part of this application, they've also had a neighborhood meeting held on May 22nd. A total of three people attended that meeting. No major concerns were voiced. The city has also sent out notices regarding this, this change, and we haven't received any comments from the public as well. Both staff and the planning commissioner are recommending approval of PZ 419, subject to the conditions of approval found in your ordinance number 1480. That's the conclusion of my presentation. I know the applicant is here as well, and he'd like to say a couple words.
So I'm gonna ask if there's any discussion, but I'm gonna ask the first question. So the larger parcel to the north, that's gonna have the same zoning?
Yes, Mayor Sertie, that is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I just have one. So where it says lot C, is that built, do we have an encroachment with the building to the right?
We don't.
It's detached?
It's detached, so there's a wall, and so now all the buildings on site have been demolished and removed already.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay, I, I just have to know, why are we, why if the zoning is the same, why do we have to go through the rezoning to change it from this zoning to the same zoning?
Councilmember Barker, very good question. Thank you for asking. At the time that the plan development was approved years ago for the Cobb's Shopping Center, that, those plans were attached to a very specific site plan and, and exclusions to those sites. Because it's a new user, we had to update that plan development.
I see. So this is, is more an update of the plan development than it is a rezoning?
Correct.
Couch in the rezoning.
That is correct, Councilmember Barker. It's the same process though.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Do you see, do you see any problem with the applicant not following through on our conditions?
No, there, there hasn't been any. The applicant has reviewed all the conditions found in your ordinance and has no problem with them.
And he agrees?
Correct.
Okay.
And he's here as well, if you'd like to confirm with that.
Yeah, before we go to a public hearing, would the applicant like to say anything? Maybe give a free promo?
I like the double lanes.
Sidney, get out of the way.
I'm sorry.
I think he was trying to bring it out.
Unless you were trying to help. So everybody's glad to, to see you come. Everybody's been mentioning they would like to see one out here forever, so you're finally doing it.
Thank you for having me. My name's Ryan Ramy, here on behalf of Coal Valley Partners. I'm a project manager. I will be overseeing the development. Quick company overview, we're a small-scale retail developer out of Portland, Oregon. We own a small portfolio shopping centers, all of which are in Phoenix, and we specialize in build-to-suit retail development, mostly for quick-service restaurants like Dutch Bros. We've built a handful of them in Arizona, and are also active in Oregon, Washington, California, Colorado, and New Mexico.
So you're the builder, you're not really the operator?
Um, no, we, so we purchased the land, and Dutch Bros signs the lease with us. In the lease, we agreed to build the building for them. And then, once we deliver the building and get a certificate of occupancy, and they open for business, we.
I noticed some of them have a pitched roof, and this one's gonna have a flat roof. Is there some reason for that?
The.
I just was curious.
Yeah.
Saw one the other day, and it was like had a, a little Dutch cottage look.
Yeah, it's, it's a case-by-case basis. I know in working with the planning department here in town, we were kind of going for a southwestern desert theme, and I can, I'm gonna highlight that later in the presentation. Just, we did kind of consciously make an effort to have, have kind of a desert style in the design of the building. So here's a quick overview of the proposed development. First phase will be anchored by Dutch Bros Coffee there on the hard corner, and we have a group, a brokerage group marketing the other two sites to restaurants and service-oriented retailers. The, both properties are currently being marketed. There will be signage up in the coming weeks. One quick thing about the, about the development here is there's an integrated parking package, so everyone who comes on site here can park anywhere they want. So I know one of the main concerns with Dutch Bros is, why are they gonna cause traffic? Will it leak into the road? Our site plan has stacking for 26 cars, which is, for Dutch Bros, is definitely in the higher, higher stacking count. As you can see too, the, the drive, the driveway queue backs into the parking lot, not onto Thunderbird or Apache Trail. So the building here is built mostly of natural stone, fiber cement, and stucco, and off-street improvements will include the development of sidewalk and half of the street along Thunderbird. The quick overview of the schedule, gonna be demoed the existing buildings in early August, hoping to start construction in October. Hundred-day construction schedule with the, with the store opening in Q1, 2020. Any questions?
No. Without giving away any secrets, or than any prospects for any of the other buildings?
Yes, for the middle, the middle pad there along West Apache Trail, got a couple restaurant users that are interested. I can't disclose due to a nondisclosure agreement, but there, there is interest in the site. And our thought is that once Dutch Bros is developed, the site will present better, and will kind of open up marketing opportunities to the, to the middle site, which will ideally lead to action on the back parcel.
Just like Frye's did on the east end, once people saw the traffic, they wanted to be close by.
Exactly.
Any more questions? If that's all your presentation, then thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Charles Beal Lot 21, San Marcos Crossing. As I look at the plan for Dutch Brothers, if you could bring that back up, somebody? If that's possible? I'm curious as to, is there a turnoff lane off of Apache Trail? Or is there any modification needed to the, the center island there on the, on Apache Trail? And then what's the total square footage versus available parking, occupancy rates versus parking in that, in regards to that needing a turnoff lane? So I'd just be curious as to that. Thank you.
Could we have Sid answer that now? Yes.
In regards to changes in the meeting or anything like that, both our engineers, our site engineer, Sam and Emile, our public works engineer, took a look at this project together, and they, and they have concluded that the as-is design is consistent with their guidelines. I, I think the resident also mentioned parking. The parking has also been consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street, Apache Junction. Good evening. That's good news. I mean, I hope they bought it outright as a package, and it's a done deal from the former owner. Question, can, and the north lot, is it locked in, or can they come back later and change the, the code, the commercial zoning or whatever it is? Okay, we don't, I didn't hear that. Is it locked in? The answer's no. Okay, is there inside dining, or inside accommodations? Handicap. More and more people are handicapped out here and need help. As far as the overall usage, I'm so happy that it's not a blight anymore. I really am. I don't know if we have a link of time, but, I mean, it's a positive. I called Cobb's home, 'cause I didn't have any other home for a while, so I was grateful for that. But it was a sore eye, and was a, a place of drug selling. Make no mistake about it, it was. So I'm glad it's something, I'm glad it's happened, and move forward. Thank you.
So in terms of the area being locked in, the applicant would have to go through the same process to change any of the proposed zoning or, or specifics to the plan development. So, so yes. Can apologize. Were the other two questions, or?
About ADA handicap?
Yeah. So the ADA, we've taken a look at during site plan review, and they've met all conditions. Dave, our building official, has also helped with that review as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And any more discussion? Ask for a motion on title only.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1480 related to rezoning case PZ 419 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous. Ordinance number 1480, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case PZ-4-19. A request by Coal Valley Partners, Apache Junction Holding, LLC, from Old West Commercial slash Planned Development, B-2/PD, to a new Old West Commercial slash Plan Development, B-2/PD, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
And do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1480 is read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation and discussion on ordinance number 1478, amending Apache Junction Code, Volume 1, Chapter 2, for appointed boards and commissions, creating a new Article 2.9, Public Art Commission. Heather.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Heather Patel with Development Services. This evening's discussion is about the creation of a public art commission. We're actually, have three different components to this, this process, but right now, we're gonna just talk about the ordinance to create the commission. We've gone, or been talking about this since October, and we're here at this stage to present to the council what's taken place thus far and, and some of the conversations that's been had. Basically, the information that we're presenting has been taken from other communities that have similar commissions, as well as some input that we received from consultant. The article does include the standard language and standard, standard sections that all of our other commissions include. However, within those sections, there are a few that, through conversations and, and previous discussions before council, there's been some questions. So the first one is under the membership, or what makes up the actual commission. It is a seven-member commission, and there was a concern about how many were city residents. So in previous editions, there was no designation, there was no clarification, but we are saying at a minimum, four of the seven need to be Apache Junction residents. We are proposing that two are practicing artists, two have some sort of interest in the arts, one is a professional that's maybe architecture or design, one has an interest in history, especially of our area, and one that is a regional business representative. So that is what is being proposed. The duties of the committee, or the commission, I apologize, is, is essentially to promote public art. It is to work with developers to get public art put on projects. It is to implement the public art program, and to provide information to the city council and staff on public art projects and policies. There are two items that we want to make sure that we get some council feedback on. In public art, there's essentially two types of projects. There's one that's a city project, so it's something that we would do, like if we were to build a building, or if we were to build a park. And so we're trying to understand, does the council want the commission to simply be a recommending body for that, when it comes to the actual art being put on the project? Or if they want the commission to be the deciding body? So they would be the ones that would say, yes, this is the approved piece of art, and then proceed with getting that installed. The other type of project is private projects, private commercial projects. And again, same thing. Does the council want the commission to be the recommending body or the deciding body? So we lay that before you for discussion. Public art, basically the appropriateness of it, all listed here, it's also in the, in the article, it just basically indicates what our intense, intent is with public art. Now, depending on what you decide as far as the commission being recommending or a deciding body, is, we would have to put in place an appeal process. So if the commission is the, the deciding body, then the appeal process allows for the applicant, or the public, or whatever, to make an appeal to the city council of the commission's decision. And this appeal process is basically a standard process that we have on all of our commissions. We have received some comments from the public over this process, so I wanted to share some of those with you. The first was, someone did recommend that we increase the commission to nine members, and to my understanding, all of our commissions are seven. And then they had asked for no more than three of the members to be consultants. We don't have any consultants on the commission. They are volunteers from the community who will have an interest in, in this commission and, and have a particular skill set. The comment was also received that we remove the section of the article that indicates the commission serves at the, the pleasure of the council, and again, to my understanding, all of our commissions serve at the pleasure of the council. And finally, a comment was received that, that legal representation is also included when determining what is appropriate art. And so my question was, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily a legal issue to determine if something is appropriate art. So, of course, that would be up to the council if they wanted to include something like that. After this evening, we would be coming back to you on the 17th for consideration of approval of this, of this commission, and right now, applications are being accepted for people to be seated on the commission, should this go through. So I do recommend to people in the community who meet the So I do recommend to people in the community who meet those requirements that they please apply. And then, in November, the commission would be seated. And in January, after some of the other things that we have to do, then the public art program would begin. I just want to throw up what our mission and our vision are. Put that out there. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have questions. I'm gonna, can I start it off?
Maybe, yes.
Okay. Do we have anybody that's already applied? Are they already coming in?
I believe, I had heard five people applied. Anna, do you know?
Yes, that is correct.
Wow.
Okay. At least two more.
My line of questioning was going to be, we've, we've been at this process for a lot of years. I think that it would be ideal to have those qualifications you're asking for, but I think that's going to be difficult and I would hate to turn away just some awesome go-getters that love art because they don't fall into those fine little lines there. So, I would ask everybody to, this is kind of like a work session, we can discuss this, correct? I, I think that needs to be broadened if, if, if need be. We've been through this before and we're having to, you know, so I'd hate to lose somebody. I mean, in the same way with being in and out of the city. I mean, DeGrasse lived up by the mountains. We have writers that live on the other side of Meridian. So, what does everybody think of that? And Robin, ask, go ahead.
I would like to see us try it like this. When we find that that does not work, at that point, I think we should think about broadening it. Because these are pretty broad right now. Somebody who's interested in history, I mean, come on. You know, that's just about anybody in the room. I did have a question. Define working artist.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barker?
Or practicing. It says practicing artist. Sounds like a witch, I'm sorry.
Artists are lazy.
In. It, actually, in our zoning code proposal that's coming up next, there's going to be more detail on what's considered to be an artist. But, for this, this case, a practicing artist, and it's outlined here, is someone from visual, public, or performing art discipline. So, they just do it. They, yeah, are involved in it. They prac, they.
So I go out to an art museum, am I a practicing artist?
Do you have a piece of art in the art museum?
I have. I have a, a bath bomb. That I made and put in the museum, does that count? I'm really serious, though. I'm trying to figure out. Who qualifies for this? Because when I first read it, I thought, okay, that could be somebody who, who is painting, doing ceramics, doing whatever. They're not necessarily out there hung in galleries and, and so forth. So they don't, because I was concerned, the same as, as Mayor Sertie was, that this was kind of squeezing it down to very few individuals, so.
I would think for this, it's somebody who has created some piece of art. Whether it is for sale or not, it does not specify, so I think it leaves it to be very open.
Okay. Second question that I had, oh crud, where is it? I, this isn't a question, it's just a comment. All of our commissions are recommending bodies. I think it's, it's just consistent to have this also be a recommending body. That's my thought on that.
May I clarify that a little bit?
Certainly.
Sorry. Well, there's, planning zoning generally is, except for CUPs.
Right. There are some accepts.
That's an exception, and so is the Board of Adjustments. That doesn't recommend.
That's a legal body.
Correct. That's a quasi judicial. That's the only clarification.
Then I will, I will change it to, the vast majority of our commissions are in fact recommending bodies. Thank you, Joel.
So it was said that if the, if they're not, if they're going to be a deciding body, that the council would be the Board of Appeals for somebody that would appeal a process? If they're going to be a recommending body, who's going to be the board, what board would be the appeal process?
That would be for Joel to answer.
Yeah, we didn't hear that part.
Well, if, if you decide that they're going to be like, the Planning and Zoning Commission without the CUP elements, that's a recommending body. So everything that the Planning and Zoning recommends, basically goes to the council. So forget about the CUP for now. So, that means council would make the ultimate decision on those, on whatever the recommendations were from the Art Commission. So, if you do it the other way and say, okay, now you're, you're just going to make it, you're the final deciding body. And unless somebody appeals, that's the only time we're going to get involved in whatever you decided.
That's the question, who would they appeal to?
Who would they appeal to?
She's asking who, if the council were the final decider, to whom could they appeal if the council made a decision they didn't care for?
Not to get legal, but I will get legal because whenever someone doesn't agree with the city council, I've seen it many times, they might want to appeal it to the Superior Court, saying it's an arbitrary and capricious matter. So it'd be a special action in court.
So, so let me ask for clarification again. I think you understood a little bit better. You, you said that if they are a recommending body, or if they're, if they're not a recommending body, if they're going to be the deciding, the, the group of people that makes the decision, any appeal would come to the council, correct?
Correct.
My question is the, is the opposite of that. If they're a recommending body, who, who does the appeal go to? It wouldn't go to the council, because if we're the final decision, there's a, there's a.
And that's what I was saying. I understood exactly what you're saying. If it goes, if you say, okay, the Art Commission is just a recommending body, like P&amp;Z is for, Robin, 90% of the cases, would you say, or more? Because, taking out CUPs.
Probably.
Then it goes to the council as a recommending body. And so then the council makes the decision ultimately. And if someone doesn't like that decision, I don't know, let's get, an example, the Roundabout, that's a big deal. Some people would like to see art there, and that might be an art project. Some people may not like what the Art Commission does. So if you make them the final arbiter on that, someone would have to actually appeal it to the city council. However, if they're just a recommending body, then it comes to you. In, in a vote, say it's, it's 5-2, we recommend the following art be placed on the Roundabout. And then council would ultimately decide whether that recommendation was okay, or, just like the zoning case. So you become the final on that. And, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Well, just one thing, if, if you want, I don't know how many decisions there's going to be, I, who knows? But I don't know if you want to see every single decision? And then as this process continues on, maybe you will change the process, because maybe you don't want to see every single decision that they do.
I do want to point out a few things, though, too. When it comes to a public project, a city project like the Roundabout, for example, what we would do is we would do an RFQ process where we would seek a public artist. And then, we would select that public artist, like we would with any other project that we put out to bid. We select the artist, and then the artist works with the community and does community meetings, and then creates the piece of art. With a private project, a commercial project, we essentially say you have to put a piece of art on the prod, property. They would determine what that piece of art would be, whether they have an artist or whatever the process would be. And then that's what's brought to, before the commission to say, okay, this is what we're going to put there, we're going to put this dove, whatever. And then the commission, are they the decider to say, yes, the dove is wonderful, or we recommend to the city council that we put the dove there? And then that, that's how that process would work. And then I, I guess on the flip side, though, too, is if we were to have public art being requested to be donated to the city, that would go before the commission and then the commission would be deciding or recommending, do we accept this piece of art or not? So those are really the three main.
Just throwing this out there, my hope would be that this commission would go shake the bushes and try to get art, too. I don't know if that's, I mean, that wouldn't be required, but I would hope that when we placed people on there, that we would get, that's why I said movers and shakers before people that know museums and they know donators. That would be ideal if they could do that, because art's not going to just fall into your lap, so it's got to be procured somehow. Gail?
Heather, could, when, we were on the slide that said the two artists, the one designed person. Because being on the CDC board, we were unable to have an architect. And, could we have it that if, like, if there was no applicants with that background, an additional artist? Because then, you know, depending if you're a sculptor, a painter, a quilter, a welder, you know, even if we didn't have that design piece, another artist of a different median would be helpful.
Yes, we can add that.
Does that make sense?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, was one of the, the five applications you do have, I mean, do we know if those individuals meet the more stringent qualifications, or are they five people that are just interested in arts?
I'm sorry, I do not know that. I do not see the applications, and I don't know when it closes. I, I'm not sure if Anna is aware of what we've received.
We don't have that information this time, but we can certainly follow up in a follow-up communication to you, council.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I've got some. So, and, yeah, the qualifications were pretty broad. The practicing, and do we have an age limit on any of the qualifications or any of the people who might be able to apply?
No, we do not.
Yeah, we've got, we've got young people in town that are practicing artists and actually do show their art throughout the city, throughout the state.
We would encourage them to please apply.
Okay, so there is, I'm asking that. There is no age qualification as to who can apply?
No.
There's nothing in the, in the code, the proposed code? I mean, if, if it's going to be someone who's a minor, I think we'd have to get their parental consent. But other than that, no, you're not restricted to having someone there, a youth member.
Okay.
Remember, there's a term, so, they graduate high school, they might be gone.
Well, I understand. I'm just making sure that the people understand that they can if they have the interest. And practicing does not mean being paid, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make clear, because there's a lot of, there's, I want to make sure we're not limiting that particular issue. And then, in the, in the verbiage, it says that the dollar amount of the art cannot be less than 1% of the project. And so if you have a project that's, let's just say, a million dollars, that's a $10,000 piece of proj, or piece of art.
Okay, that would be Agenda Item 14 and 15. So we can talk about that.
We'll, we'll talk about that one.
We'll get, we'll get to that one.
Okay, well, it was in this that we were talking, I mean, it's in there, so.
It's in the memo, I think.
Oh, well, it was one memo for all, I've got three items on the agenda for public art, so, sorry, that was confusing, I just tried to shove it all in there.
Okay, well, I'll ask it on the next, whenever, whenever it's appropriate, I'll ask that question, so. All right. Is that it, Jeff? That's all I got on that one, I guess.
And also, I would point out, there's also landscape art, too. People make beautiful. So this was discussion only, so if, if no more, then we're going to move on from that to Item Number 13. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of approval of Resolution Number 1925 approving submittal of an application to the Gila River Indian Community State Shared Revenue Program.
Heather.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, we submitted an application to the Gila River Indian Community for support of our senior transportation program, and we were notified that we move on to the next step in the process. And in order to qualify, we have to get a resolution from the city council approving us to move forward with an application. If we receive this resolution, then our application will be presented to the community's council, and then they make the final decision on who gets awarded. We would know probably October if we were to be awarded the funding for our senior transportation services.
Any discussion? With no discussion, I will ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 19-25, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving the submittal of a grant application to the Gila River Indian Community State Shared Revenue Program for fiscal year 2019-2020 be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Presentation and discussion on Resolution Number 19-24, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled 2019 Amendments to City Code, Land Development Zoning Ordinance 13-4, Art in Public and Private Developments. Heather.
Uh, we can talk about 14 and 15 together, right? How does that?
If you announce the title, yes.
And 15 would be Presentation and Discussion on Ordinance Number 1477, Amending AJ City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, Adopting Section 1-13-14, Art in Public and Private Developments, Repealing Conflicting Provisions, Providing Severability. So, we'll discuss both of these two together.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is the actual ordinance which allows us to create such a program. So, there's a few things that we will want to talk about on this. Again, this was all based upon what some other communities are doing within Arizona, some input we received from a consultant, and then also some development history that we've had here in Apache Junction that helped us to create some of these numbers. The amendment is lengthy, so this is just a quick outline of what is in the, in the amendment. The main item is the project applicability and when is public art required? So for private projects, this would be any mixed-use, commercial, nonprofit, religious institutions, that type of, of stuff would require that they comply with this, this process. Public projects would be city projects, again, if it's something that we are building, like a building or a park, or even in our Roundabout. It will not include any basic paving projects that we do, and, and smaller projects. So, projects, how are they assessed? How do we determine how much money is provided to public art? So under the private projects, it is a percentage of the construction cost, and we deter, or they, they can either put a percentage towards public art based upon their construction costs, or they can contribute the money to a fund. And then that fund is then used to do projects in public areas. The maximum amount that any project would collect is $100,000, and we base that on their building permit value. So, if there's a project that comes in that's, that's less than 5,000 square feet, then we do 0.25% of the value. 5,000 to 10,000 is 0.5, and then over 10,000 square foot, that's the 1%. Multi-family projects, this would just be projects that are 10 units or more. This would not be single-family developments. We would do 1% of the construction cost, and again, they could contribute also to the fund. And I'm going to go a little bit later in detail of, of options. Public projects, projects over $50,000. And then we would have set aside 1% of the construction cost for, for that. That also does depend on the funding source. So if we get certain funds from the feds and they do not allow for that, then we would not be able to, to do that within the, the project budget. Renovation projects, that's if there's 50% or more change in the area of the floor plan. And then, public art. What is public art? So, public art, as outlined here, straight out of the, the ordinance, essentially says that it, it has to be viewed to the public in, in a way that people can see it at all times. It can be a variety of different mediums, and it cannot be just something that's functional. So art cannot. cannot be just something that's functional. Um, so art cannot be grates or sunshades, streetlights, benches, whatnot. Now, there is somewhat of a conflicting provision or sentence in here that talks that, so for example, if a bench is like a super elaborate, decoratively art bench, then the commission could consider that as being okay, because it's, it's more art than it is just a basic bench. Um, certainly, public art is not something that you can just buy pre-made, that's kind of made, you know, a whole bunch of things are made. And, and there has to be an artist that has designed it. Um, so, an artist for public art is, um, again, here outlined, it's, it's someone who is professional. Now, this, this person does have to have sort of a portfolio, so they do have to have sold some of their art. Um, they do have to be recognized by their peers and critics as an artist. Um, and again, for the most part, when, when it comes to cities' projects, we're gonna be doing an RFQ process, and so it will be outlined in the RFQ, um, that they have to provide samples of their work, that they have to show that something has been commissioned from them before. Um, but then, on the private side, they will be responsible for finding that artist, and then they do just have to share and provide some information about who that artist is, and then the commission, um, would then determine if that is an artist or not. So, the ways that can be contributed. So, if the value of a project is less than 50,000, based upon the percentages, um, we feel that all of that money, because it would be so small, would go straight into the fund versus, um, an actual piece of art on the project. If the project is between 50,000 and 5 million, they can do any combination. So if they wanna piece, put a piece of art, um, again, maximum investment is $100,000. So if they wanted to, if their project required all 100,000, they could do a piece of art for 50,000, and then the other 50 they could put into the fund. So there could be any combination of that. If the project is over 5 million, um, we would like to see some art. So, a minimum of 50,000 would have to be in the art, and then the balance would go towards the, the fund. So, what are other communities doing? Um, we have some communities that just do public projects. We have some communities that do public and private, and some that just do private. Um, and then we have some communities that have no public art program in place, um, and some that are going to be putting one in place. So far, the comments that we have received was to clarify what are the funding options for public art. So we, this fund, um, and the, this permit fee would be one way. Um, we could also get funds from the general fund, we could get grants, things of that sort. Now, another question was, um, what can the funding be used for? So, in our amendment, it does list all of the things that could be used for, for public art. And then, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, one question was, why are we not doing single-family development? And, um, well, Sidney could answer that better than I could. He did a good job the other night answering that. Um, and then, a commissioner wanted to know, if we could just forget residential, multifamily, and single-family altogether, and not do anything. Um, and then another commissioner was concerned that this is a requirement to participate versus just a, a contribution. Um, but ultimately, the commission did, um, vote to approve or to forward this amendment to the City Council by a 5-2 vote. Um, in the agenda, the electronic agenda, there was a, a draft of the ordinance. There were three minor changes to it, and I placed a copy of the new one dated August 29th on your, your desk there. Uh, basically, under, um, on page eight, there was a section that talked about, um, how would the 10% administrative fee be charged for, for, for this? And it was just to clarify, it would be based off of the permit fee for the public art portion. Uh, another section was, when, um, when would we determine that something would, applicable timeframe of removal or destruction? And that would be when the city is aware that a particular piece of art was going, or was damaged, and then it needed to be removed, and we would give them 180 days to take care of that. Um, and then, on page 14, we just removed residents. There, there was a section that, that talked about in a report what information would be collected and provided, and it said the artist's name and their residence. That's really not applicable or necessary, so we just removed that. Again, September 17th will be when we come before the City Council again to, um, get, uh, consideration on this item. So, if you had any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Lot of info. Any, any questions and discussion?
I'll go before you, because I'm short. You have the long question look on your face.
I just hope I can ask my question this time.
I, I also would like to know why a single-family development, not a small house, but a development of, you know, 20, 30, 40, and more residences, would not also meet the same requirements? They're gated, they're, you know?
Counselmember Barker, it's my experience on working in other cities that, that, and, and working with arts commission is that, that request is atypical. Um, we've had conversations with single-family developers, and what they have always responded to is that they rather, rather allocate those funds for the architecture of the homes, um, the type of quality and fencing, um, that surrounds the community, and also the amenity package. So instead of providing art, they rather provide a clubhouse, or a pool, so of that sort.
Well, that's not the greatest argument in the world, because anybody who's building anything would rather take that money and put it into what they're building. But, yeah, okay.
For instance, we have a, a development called Stagecoach Trails, right? Would be cool to have something stage-coachy out front.
There's actually a stagecoach on the inside, which is interesting, and it's kinda neat.
Yeah. Jeff, we'll go to you.
All right, so back to that question. Did you, do you remember the question I asked about why define, or wait, get back to the question I was having. Um, the minimum, or has to, it can't, it has to exceed the 1% of the value of the permit?
It will not exceed 1%.
That's not what the...
So then, so...
That's not what the thing said. It said it, it couldn't be less than 1%. That's what the verbiage says.
Okay, um, I, I...
Meaning, if it's a, if it's a $10 million project, that's a $100,000 piece of art that has to be done. I'm sorry, but that's a pretty expensive piece of art to be put out there on a, on a, on a project. That, that just seems, it, it, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk now.
Yeah, I told you.
Uh, you know, when this was first brought up, I, 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 believe me, I have, I've, all my kids are artists in some way, fashion, or something like this. Um, so I have nothing against art. I'm just not sure that it's something that, that we need to, um, impose a fee upon our businesses, because we all know that when businesses are charged fees, they just add it on to their, um, the, the costs that they then transfer to the people who are buying their product, whether it's a house, whether it's a candy bar, whatever it might be. And so we're just imposing, um, this on to the public after all, because that's what a tax is, a fee is, whatever it is. But, um, the, 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 the planning and zoning had that question, why is this a mandatory thing for the business to build, or that they're building, to actually give this fee? Why can't it be if they want to? Um, secondly, is, is the art on a private property have to be outside the building, or can it be something inside the building?
Okay, I'll address that one, and then Joel can get the other one. If it was an office building and they had a lobby, a piece of art could be inside the lobby, so long as it was open 40 hours a week.
Okay.
But generally, I mean, it, it's gonna be outside where people can see it.
Okay.
No, why can't it be?
What was the question again?
It is, why is, why are we, it's, it's the, we have, they have to have a piece of art that's at least, um, 1%.
I'm just kidding. I, I understand the question.
Okay.
And my understanding is, this came from the consultants.
Yeah.
And it was based from, uh, other cities.
Yeah.
So it's really a policy decision. There's no legal issue as to why the difference.
Okay.
And it does not have to be one piece of art.
Correct, correct.
Could it be a piece of art on each corner, or leading into the driveway to, out on the, you know, where the access to the, to our main thoroughfares are, to make the whole city beautiful?
Totally.
It doesn't have to be, you don't have to come up with a, a very expensive piece of art.
Totally understand that. Um, but I, I, I agree with whoever said it on the P&amp;Z, that it should be a, a volunteer, if they wanna put art in there. I think it would be great to do that. Um...
Your honor, I would just add, that, that, that decision is completely a public policy decision on, from this council perspective on, we're following your direction on those type of questions, councilmembers. So, that's, that's how, that's the input we're trying to seek. We're, we're following, and just, as we work through this year, trying to get through what you all think is, is gonna be best.
Okay. Because one of the things is, you know, if you set the limit, it has to be the minimum, or, or the, it has to, it can't be less than. It takes away from the competitiveness of producing the art and getting us the lowest cost and best product. People are just out there overbidding. That's my saying. Um...
Can I interrupt while you're getting your thoughts? Is it possible to have some of these funds go into a pool? Let's say a small project doesn't generate that much, but you've got three other little projects going on. Can you pull those together to make enough to do an impressive impactful thing for the community?
Certainly, and I, that's why I understand it. That's where, if they choose to not put art, they can contribute to this fund that would go towards public art of some kind.
For instance, if you look at downtown Tempe, there's art everywhere, and it's pretty, it makes the whole experience interesting down there, but I don't tie any of that art to one particular office building. It's just that the art is just down there for everybody to enjoy all over. So, is it possible to take this into a general pool to do something like that, onto, we don't have a true square, but we do have a, a junction, something like that? Is that possible to be written into here?
Absolutely. So the, the fund, that's an option. They can put the art on their property, or they can do it in the fund. And so we're recommending, when it's a very small project in dollar amount, it will result in just a tiny bit of funds, so then all of that should just go to the fund, and not to put art on their project. Um, projects that are over 5 million in value, then that is gonna be a lot bigger project. And so, they can do multiple pieces of art throughout their project at different points. They could do one large piece, um, but...
For reference, what did the Fries project cost? Are we gonna have something bigger than?
I don't know, Matt. Was it 20? 12, 12 to 20. Well, yeah, we're not 100% sure on that. We didn't, Janine from Econo- we can get back to you on that. Janine from Economic Development. But it's, it's somewhere around 15, 20 million dollars.
All right. Jeff, you still have the floor, if you have questions.
All right. And, um, so, I, yeah, I just, it just, it just, it just isn't the proper use of funds, um, that are mandated by people, mandated people to do that. Um, and there are, and you did say that, when the consultant was here, just so everybody, when the consultant was here back in last October, was it, I, I, you said? We have cities within the state that do go out and obtain their art in their downtown through, um, nonprofits, and, and through, um, uh, business organizations that, that, that do get the, that go out and, and find the art, pay for the art themselves, that type of stuff. Because they do under- the business owners do understand, us business owners do understand that if we make our, our, our properties look good and presentable to the public, people are going to come in there. So it's, it's not that the business owners don't wanna make their property, their buildings, whatever, look good, and, and presentable to the pu- to the patrons that, that come to them. It just comes down to, um, saying that you've gotta go spend the money, or give it to them for whatever purpose. Um, and then, there was one other, yeah, that's all I've got right now. I've basically voiced my opinion.
More discussion. And when will this be coming back, and what would it look like when it does come back?
September 17th is when it's due to come back. Um, as far as, um, additional input, I mean, these are the items that we'd, we'd need feedback on. Um, so we can certainly take everything that's been said this evening and present it on the 17th for your consideration.
Just one other, I just want, one clarification about where, when the art is obtained. Is there anything in here where the, um, art commission would put preference for what, what you might wanna call local, or, or even regional, um, artists to provide the artwork, give some, uh, yeah, preferential to somebody who is locally, as opposed to going out and, because that's one of the, the, the consultant said, she said, it is, it's a, you put it out for a national search, and I wanna make sure that there's some way to give some preferential, uh, treatment to local people, as opposed to going out and just, um, giving the money to somebody who doesn't really have any interest, or, or, or tie-in to our community. So I just want to put that out for everybody to think about.
Okay, so as far as private project is concerned, they would be responsible for finding their artist. Um, but when it comes to a public project, and we do an RFQ, we can include that in the RFQ process. The consultant did say, depending on how much you, how much money you're putting into a particular project, varies the, the circle of who you're trying to get. So if it's a, a rather small project, it is only going to be local, regional, um, you know, throughout the state and nationally. So it just depends on what the project is and how much you have to put into it.
Yeah, and then, and then, I'm just beating up this one, but that's why it, it's, when, when, um, you don't go out and tell, we don't go out and tell the road builder that we have $10 million to build a road. We go out and say, hey, this is what we need, these are the qualifications, this is what we want. And then they come back to us with the best price for what they can do. And I, it just seems, pardon my French, bad afterwards, to go out and say, we are gonna spend, um, $50,000 on a piece of art, and I'll go out and produce something. That, that just seems, just, just, just...
Which is why I would suggest having a pool, too. And then have the art commission will then pick that in, so that they don't waste the money. So, that's why that art commission would be very, it's very important to have the right people on there, so that they're not doing something stupid like that.
Totally understand. I'm just voicing my concerns about the whole process.
And Joel, I have a question. What about if we do get a bunch of cool stuff, what about insurance? For instance, the Kachina, how is that insured? Uh, well, what happens is, what happened on that was, we consulted Southwest River Services, and that's our insurance carrier. And I believe they got an estimate of what they thought it was worth, and I believe they set an amount, and we have insurance on that piece of art. And we do own it, so we would do that with the other pieces of art. So if a tornado takes it away, then we can buy something else? We would insure the value, correct. Okay. Any, any more discussion?
Thank you, Heather.
Yes.
Yeah, you know me, Heather. I appreciate your time and your efforts in putting forth this. It's just, I get to ask questions.
All right. Moving on then to, Heather, you're finished, right?
No.
You're not. One more. Presentation, discussion, direction to staff on proposed provisions to AJ City Kit, Code, Volume One, Chapter Four, Fees for Proposed, this is, uh, Accessible Art in Private Developments. But you've got Dave and Sidney to back you up on this.
We each have something to contribute to this particular item. So, in Volume One, Chapter Four, um, this is where we identify the fees. Um, and we did do an update back in July, and in that, and so now we're proposing that, uh, public art, that fee be included in this chapter. Um, whoop, sorry. Um, so, again, let's see, the same, it's the same chart, it's the same discussion. I don't really have to say too much more on that. It's just that we're... It's just that we're gonna have our own section within Chapter Four that talks about public art. And then, Sydney.
Mayor and Council, part of this discussion tonight, planning staff has reviewed and re-reviewed our fees, and, and noticed kind of an, an opportunity to become more efficient. So currently, we charge five hundred dollars for an advertising deposit for our, our, our public hearing cases. So everything from, you know, a rezoned, a CUP, anything like that, that comes before you, we have, we require deposit from the applicant of five hundred dollars. What we are recommending is moving away from that deposit system and going to a flat fee for each certain case. So a conditional use permit will have its own fee, a rezon will have his own fee, plan development would have his own fee. Right now, we have a total of three departments tracking an escrow account, and really tracking down that money of that five hundred dollars. So what we have experienced is, experienced is, that five hundred dollars has not been enough most of the time. So what we are, what we are doing is, we collect the five hundred dollars initially, and then we find out that there is a balance, an additional balance to advertise that project. And we lots of times front that money, and then, and then we invoice the applicant for the remainder of those funds. So there's a inefficiency there. Right now, we have finance, we have development services, I mean, we have the city clerk's office all working together, so a lot of staff resources. Several years ago, the city absorbed approximately seven thousand dollars in losses regarding advertising fees, where, where we requested funds from the applicant, but we were unable to collect them, and the city already paid those out. So what we are proposing tonight is that those fees change, like I mentioned. And in terms of conditional use permit, it would go down from five hundred to two fifty, the board of adjustment, it would go down to five hundred to three hundred. But for, and also the general plan amendment would go down a hundred dollars. But items like a rezoning request, plan development, master plan, community rezoning would go, would go up from, to another additional five hundred dollars, or additional thousand dollars. And then a zoning, zoning tax amendment would go up to a thousand. We've used data that was, we've used the, the last three years of data to come up with these numbers, for them to be consistent. And then our next up is Dave.
Mayor and Council, Dave Zellner, Building and Safety Manager. So we went through the process, rewrote our entire fee ordinance, and in the time period since July first, we've discovered a couple of concerns, or things that we wanted to correct. And since we were going back into Chapter Four with the public art thing, we wanted to go ahead and take care of these. So a lot of it's just clarifying, so the first one is clarifying that we're going to include a certain square footage of awning, about four hundred and eighty square feet, within the flat fee to set a park model. So we have that under manufactured home, we did not have it clearly under park metal, or park models, so we wanted to clarify that, so that's one part. The second is, we have for manufactured housing, so the state law actually requires that if they show an awning going in when they set the manufactured home, that that has to be included in the fee for the setting of the, the manufactured home. If they add a awning at any time after that initial set, that is something that is handled through us locally, and we can charge a fee. So we wanted to make sure that the, we clarified that an awning that's not done with the original set, there is an additional fee. And that fee was in the table, we just didn't have it clarified that it's not part of the original set. We also kind of realized that we had a manufactured home remodeling and repair fee, based on a certain amount of square feet, that was actually more, it was cheaper to use another permit to do just a regular remodel than to do this one. So we realized, let's just do the remodels. So we're striking the language on the manufactured home remodeling, just having that refer to what we charge for residential normally. We also discovered in our commercial roof replacement, that the fee level that we were, or the, the valuation we were looking to use was extremely high. So we had it at fifty percent of the occupancy of a U, and that was running about four, the, the, the one hundred percent of, or valuation was around forty-seven, eighty. So fifty percent of that ended up being twenty-four dollars or so. Most roofing is somewhere between five and ten dollars a square foot is the cost, so we were about double that. So we've changed it to ten percent to, so basically, we're, we're figuring that most roofs are going on for about four seventy-five dollars per square foot, and so we're basing the fee off of that. And then there's a couple of them that we, for commercial, just the way I ended up writing or wording the, a couple of them, it wasn't clear that some other things were covered, or that they may have been under a higher fee. So we identified commercial HVAC that is other than rooftop units, and came up with a fee that, which is actually slightly lower than what we charge for the rooftop units. And then we did ad, replace, repair, required ventilation, so we didn't have anything if they needed to put in fans for, like nail salons are required to put in additional ventilation because of the toxicity of the, the polishes and stuff like that. So there's, you know, different occupancies, like a garage would have to have a certain amount of air or ventilation, so we wanted to make sure that those were covered. Then we also, for, under our plumbing fees, we didn't have anything for just general water sewer line addition, repair, replacement. We had put in something for gas line, but we didn't, probably should have said gas and water, but we didn't do that. So we've added a fee just to cover when somebody's doing water sewer line addition replacement, both residential and commercial. And those line up and match with the, the fees for the gas line that we have in there, so the amount of footage and the, the cost per footage. And then we clarified that, so we had residential relocate toilet, and shower, and tub not on a slab. I have no idea where I came up with that, but we realized it didn't make a lot of sense, so we, you know, there are conditions where the tub gets changed in its location, or they go from a fiberglass tub to a shower with the, the pit and ceramic tile and all that stuff, which is a lot more to look at and, and code related. So we just have relocate alter shower tub, and so there's a, a minimum fee for that. And then the other marks, or corrections are just some things in the grading section, which is really short, but we just kind of missed some clarification there. We had subdivision misspelt, and we wanted to make sure that it was clear that the plan review was included in the fee for the commercial development individual lot. So that's just some cleanup that we wanted to do while we were looking at Chapter Four again.
Any questions? Are there any questions? Any discussion from the council?
Thank you.
I just have one question, on the advertising, sorry, Sydney, are you talking about print advertising, or are you talking about the signs?
Councilmember Evans, it's the print advertising.
Okay, so how do we figure in the price for those very large zoning signs that we have to put up? Is that just included in the permit?
That's correct.
And do we have to have those giant si, I mean, is it in our codes that they have to be a certain size? I was recently in another city and noticed, they had like an eleven by fourteen on a stick for a zoning case. And I thought, well, why do we have to have those great big giant ones? Because you want to?
Well, I think the, the council that passed the rule wanted it, yes. And it's, so you can see it from the right away, so it would be conspicuous, so people would not have to trespass on, trespass onto the property. That's why you see the big, large ones. And then for the print one, that's because of the media, the media has pushed that, they don't want to lose that, someday they will, but right now, they're still strong, going strong. The papers are still going strong for those costs.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments or questions? So I am gonna ask for a motion on this confusing item.
The motion itself as written is pretty confusing, but I will read it exactly the way it's written. And whoever wrote it, you might want to rethink this kind of motion.
Should we do that right now?
Okay, this motion is written as follows. I move the city council give direction to staff on the proposed revisions to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Four, Fees pertaining to proposed fees for publicly accessible art in private developments. Revisions to fees for legal advertisements for planning and zoning cases, and amendments to certain building permit fees and grading permit fees. And these items be presented to council on September seventeenth. City Council Agenda Under Old Business.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
I'm gonna go yes also.
Six one, your honor. Motion passes.
Joel, just a clarifying question, does this allow staff to do the sixty day notice as required by state law, this motion?
No, what will happen at the next meeting, you're gonna see it again, and you might, there'll be more discussion, and at that time, if you change anything...
We'll start it then?
We'll start it then, and we'll get permission to do the sixty day notice at that point. Because if you start it now, at the next meeting, you might want to change some of these, so that's why we really shouldn't be starting the sixty days notice yet, wouldn't you agree?
Okay, with that.
And I'll be interested to get Robert's opinion on why he went no.
I think he thought that we were voting on everything in here, not that it was coming back for future discussion, I think...
All right, tonight's, council direction staff, which is, yep, we'll come back on the seventeenth.
We did not, we did not approve anything tonight.
Correct, this is not a public, public input cannot occur this time, so it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Well, you can't do it anyways.
Do we have a motion on upcoming council dates?
Your honor, I moved an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Monday, September sixteenth, twenty nineteen. And an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, in the city council conference room, in the city council chambers, located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
This is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak for him and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three minute limit for each speaker. The first one is going to be Trina Flam. And if everyone would give their proximate address and name.
I'm Trina Flam, and I live two oh two North Meridian, down in Apache Junction. I come before you this evening, council members and attendees, to offer myself up as an advocate for those with little or no voice, and to propose some changes to current laws, so that there really is protection for our very valuable, but vulnerable elderly aging population. Recently, April of this year, I have been personally involved in one of the most silent and accepted crimes that I could not believe even existed, until I found myself on the brunt end of trying to pick up the pieces and stop the blatant theft. Since May, I have made numerous phone calls, done hours of investigating, and sought help from every available agency that I'm aware of, that's formed for protection of vulnerable elderly people. I have found very little, if any, help at all. Referrals have me back where I started. I have a terribly exploited eighty-one-year-old uncle, I live in Pennsylvania, he lives in Arizona for health reasons. His loving wife passed in two thousand and three. He was born with a disability and not expected to live, but he did, and worked hard all his life. He became a workaholic that was as much in demand, he was always, he always gave one hundred percent of himself to any job, and superseded others in the same position. He worked for the state police in Pennsylvania, inspecting large trucks on the highway to keep our roads safer, he was well-known throughout the state. He also formed and helped other farmers, he also formed and helped other farmers. He came to Arizona with his wife and also worked full-time here. Gavin Ranch on Sunland Avenue in Ellsworth was one of the senior parks he helped create. In two thousand seventeen, at the age of eighty, foreseeing the possible need for added help as he aged further, he signed up a local Arizona couple, husband and wife team, that he thought he could trust, trust, trust to care for him if he need be. This team were managers of the trailer park that he lived in, they told him stories as to taking care of other elderly people in the park and being signed on as their power of attorneys. My uncle had seen them clean up the park by eradicating some noisy residents. In March of two thousand seventeen, the very day the POA papers were signed, they kicked me out of the park, and they rewrote their laws and regulations to suit their intentions. By December seventeen, my uncle was left with empty bank accounts, cashed out certificates, his parents' farmland in Pennsylvania sold by forgery, notarized manufactured bill of sale to include relatives' lands that made the POAs, buyers of every parcel of land, mine included. My uncle's titles to his truck, house, trailer, and everything else was stolen. April of eight, two thousand nineteen, this year, believing that they had my uncle to the point of death, all as a cover-up to what they had done, they called in hospice, which was actually my uncle's saving grace. Nurses stood up for him. Please hear me, I'm asking for help for me, my uncle, and for all unsuspecting vulnerable elderly people that are voraciously being taken advantage of. I would like to propose that all power of attorney applications be mandated to be notarized, registered, and filed, having public access, like a nursing license that can be checked into by anyone, businesses or otherwise. That there be an audit system to protect the elderly's finances and personal property from the power of attorneys, and that notaries be required to only notarize if the person is present with a valid ID, making it illegal to notarize an on-ID or person alone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Harley Suko.
Hi, I'm Harley Suko, we live at eighteen thirty-five West Shiprock Street in Apache Junction. We moved down here in ninety-eight in October, so we'll be down here twenty-one years in October. We farmed for twenty-eight years, I'm a retired farmer, and I'm talking behalf of my wife, Elizabeth Bates, and myself, Harley. Anyway, we usually, as long as our daughter was alive, we went to Missouri for about four months since we retired from our jobs here, because we worked for about seven, eight years after we retired from the farm. And I drove bus for the city of Tempe for eight years, but I didn't know which was east, west, north, or south. The first trip I made, I figured, oh man, this isn't farming. But I made it. Anyway, we've got really a problem with water damage. We've had a few small ones before, but it was on the irrigation part of it. We've got about a third of an acre, they call it, so we, I, I've got, used to have fourteen fruit trees, and then I raised some tomatoes, but nothing for sale, I do a lot of giving away. I've got a lot of free customers, especially in the wintertime, especially with the citrus, we've got four different kinds of citrus, and one of them is a grapefruit and a pom, pomegranate cross. And my wife always says, that is what Eve, she's a minister's daughter, so she, she says, that's what Eve ate, that forbidden fruit, was that pomegranate grapefruit cross, and it is something really different. And then I've got a tangelo tree and a red orange, but it's not the blood orange, it's a really sweet orange. And so I've got a lot of, a lot of customers, my timer?
You should have a timer there, you're, you're about halfway, halfway up.
It'll turn red.
I'm really hard of hearing, but, anyway, since our daughter passed away, which is five years ago... Anyway, since our daughter passed away, which was five years ago, we've been going up to North Dakota, we drove an RV up, and so we stay on my brother's farm, he's on the original farm where I was born and raised, and I help him up there usually for six weeks making hay during the Angus business. And, but we was gone the last day of June, and I believe it was the, the ninth, yeah, the ninth day of, no, the seventh day of August, which was about five weeks that we were gone here, we got a, a call from the water company that we've got a very high-water bill that turned a meter off. But my wife had a stroke about seven years ago.
You are out of time now.
I'm out of time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to address this at the end and get with you. So ju- just be patient, you, you can't speak anymore, but we will try to come back and get you some help. We'll get somebody to talk to you.
Anyhow, my water bill is four thousand three hundred dollars.
Can you stay?
Yeah. He is going to stay, okay. Jan Koontz. She may have gone. Is Jan still here? Okay, we're going to keep going then. Marty Corrick. And I saw Marty left. Dale Cochran.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dale Cochran from here in Apache Junction, and I'm the Fleet Maintenance Manager for Republic Services here in Arizona. There's been a lot of talk about what's been going on, and I just want to reaffirm that, you know, the, the trucks that we'll be running here in your town, none will be older than a two thousand seventeen model, and they will never be older than seven years. You know, one thing we strive ourselves on is putting the most reliable and the safest trucks out and servicing our customers, and that's one thing that I hold very dear to my heart, and just want to make sure that you guys understand the commitment that I have and that our company has with servicing our customers and taking care of them and being there for them if there's any, anything they need. Thank you.
Charles Beal, and I think Charles left. Stacy Jones.
Good evening, bless you.
Thank you.
Let's talk dry mouth. Okay, so the first thing I want to address is, and I'm going to talk fast, Republic Services, so I just wanted to make a comment. I have them, I understand that it is what it is now. I hope that there's some transparency in the future because there's oftentimes, my trash has not been picked up at all, and there has not been a place or a physical location that I can go in and speak with someone about that, a physical structure, and I've been waiting on a call back on quite a few occasions from a couple of years ago. I've only been successful two times in a few years in having someone actually dispatched to come back out and pay my trash, even though I pay my trash bill. Moving forward, the next thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, when I first moved to Apache Junction, I think it's about four years ago, you know, I applied for a position with the Masters of Science in Criminal Justice and was told that I was overqualified for a job. I've since taken, you know, my talents to Maricopa County. With that said, a lot of times with working, when I go outside, I notice there's always a newspaper every morning when I leave and in my travels. However, I find it very hard to find out information for someone that is not necessarily native or affluent to Apache Junction to find out about these types of meetings, so on and so forth. So I think that, you know, if you want to attend, I really hope there's a better way for people that are not able to work here but live here and pay taxes to be able to voice their input. So I just wanted to say that. And lastly, I wanted to say that, you know, going back to being under quali- overqualified, excuse me, to work here, I still work here. I go in and out of Pinellas, Maricopa County, and, you know, I sat here and I listened to, no offense, Heather, I listened to, you know, a discussion that went on for a long time about art, and although I live here, I think it's nice to beautify Apache Junction, but I also think it's putting the cart in front of the horse because you guys have a really big social and human services issue out here, and I hope that gets addressed in the future. Because I do come here, even though I don't work here, and I know you have crises, and I work in other cities all over the place with police, with their crisis teams, I don't notice any of those things here. And I'm in and out of that daily, but unlike the police, I do not have a gun, I do not have a taser. I go in there using my education and my skills, you know, to make places safer, to include Apache Junction, and I would like to see why we're having expensive pieces of art, no offense again, Heather, here, that maybe we have services that people need as well, because there's definitely a high need here. Thank you, that's it.
James Green. James Green. Edward Lee.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Edward Lee, I live at three-two-three-five South Bowman, been an Apache Junction resident since two thousand and three. I'm also a driver for Republic Services, and there's been a, there was a lot of commentary before about what was going on or may be going on with the future contract. I realize we were three, one of three companies, Waste Management, Waste Connections, I.E., can't even think of their name right now, Rad, and ourselves. Most people don't know that Rad is not a local company, it is owned by Waste Connections. Of the three companies, we are the only one that's a local company. Our, our corporate offices are here in the valley. Myself, I've been working for the company for almost twenty-five years, intend to continue working for them until it's time for me to retire. The crew that I work with, most of the guys have got fifteen years or more, very few have got less than that, so obviously I'm not the only one that thinks it's a company worth staying with. And if you follow through with letting us have the contract, I can assure you that the drivers that get sent out will do an excellent job, they will provide good service, and they will get the job done for you. And for you, sir, I want to thank you for bringing up the suicide hotline, that was something that affected my brother a few months ago, so please don't let it just be a passing, passing thing, it is something that's important to a lot of people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Zach Venable.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Zach Venable. I'm the Operations Manager for the Apache Junction Landfill. I work for Republic Services. I did want to just share a little bit of information tonight, I know there was a, we, we discussed a little bit about the letter that came out just in the middle of August, and I did kind of want to talk about, under the proposed contract, any trash under that contract will go to Apache Junction Landfill, increasing the tonnage there, which will lead to slightly faster closure of that site. I know a lot of people are looking forward to Apache Junction Landfill and the park that has been promised, so this will contribute to that directly within the community. Additionally, all of our recyclables will be collected by separate vehicles, separate trucks, and they will be taken to our recycling facility that's located on the SRP M.I.C. reservation. Everything will be sorted, contamination will be separated, and the good materials will be sent off to other places to be made into new products. Lastly, the note I'd like to make is, we will continue to carry the, the resident rate for City of Apache Junction residents, as well as free dump week every quarter. Thank you.
Laurel Lewis.
My name is Laurel Lewis, Shiprock, Apache Junction. Here because of the proposal for monopolizing trash services for residential customers. I've done a great deal of research on this because of the variety of information that has been passed around, robocalls, flyers, and some articles in the local paper, letters to the editor. So I want to share a little bit of what I found for you. Mesa Gilbert Tempe, Phoenix, all run their own trash services. Chandler does have a contract. Queen Creek has a five-year contract, which is done by open bid. Florence has a five-year contract, renewable options for one year for five years long. Some of the reasons I've been told of the need for this move is infrastructure. However, the cities who've gone from running their own never mention that when I talk to their people. It was the cost of them running the program themselves. You already limit residential cus- trash service to Monday and Thursday in Apache Junction. So people who are saying they're seeing trash trucks every day running up and down their streets, they must be seeing commercial guys. Because in two thousand nine, the state legislature said, you guys can't say, "Commercial businesses can only use this service." So they can run a commercial truck to a business every day of the week if that business wants that, and they don't have to go to one specific person or company, which the landfill is also, landfill is also run and owned by Republic Services. So today I did a call. Ninety-gallon trash can for a residential customer, one day a week, recycle one day a week. Rad, the price per month, nineteen ninety-five dollars, nineteen dollars ninety-five cents. Waste Management, ninety-gallon trash, two times a week, recycle once a week, eighteen dollars a month. Republic Services, ninety-gallon trash, once a week, recycle mandatory, added fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Monthly bill came out to twenty-one sixty-four. You mentioned that this was something that came up or was proposed to you. You didn't say who proposed it. Was this your own idea? Was this a business? Who proposed this? Or was this residents who proposed it? Can I keep going or no?
No.
Okay. You are having another meeting on this, though, yes?
Yes. Stephen, Stephen Herring.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephen Herring. I'm here from Republic Services as well, forty-fifty South Tomahawk Road here in Apache Junction. What, what I'd like to talk to you about is the accusations about monopoly and what this truly is. This is actually more of an ultimate competition. If you're not familiar with the RFP process, and I apologize, I'm kind of talking to the room behind me and those that are watching on through the monitors, it's an, it's an opportunity for a city to leverage the buying power of the municipalities, so all fourteen thousand households in Apache Junction, and you send that out to various haulers, in this instance, Waste Connections, which owns Rad, Waste Management, and then Republic Services, and we, we provide a proposal for that, that project. We were selected because of our proposal, and additionally, we presented by far the lowest rate. The rate that, based on what we have seen, would save the average resident about a hundred and ten dollars per year. Our rates that we proposed are ten dollars and seventy-one cents for two-time-per-week trash, and for an additional eight dollars per month, residents may add one-time-per-week recycling. Thank you.
Terry Reynolds.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Terry Reynolds, I live at eleven-twenty-one South Loser Drive here in Apache Junction. First of all, I'd like to point out that Waste Management is the number-one waste management company in the United States. Allied Management is the number-two waste management company in the United States. These are based upon Google searching. Rad doesn't come on your anything, not even in the top one hundred. They're basically a small company, or a smaller company than both number-one and number-two, Allied in Waste Management. So it's kind of like a David and Goliath situation, as far as I'm looking at it. The bids received from Waste Management, as you've seen, the fourteen ninety-five under the standard, the curbside recycling, the A.B.N.C., Waste Management's bid was well above both the other two companies that bid. To me, that kind of indicates that they are not concerned with it, they're not giving a comparative bid, they're not concerned with the business at all. So that leaves us with A, Allied, or right-way disposal, Rad. Each of three councilmembers currently have read, according to the meeting, August sixth meeting, which I would love to have had the minutes, but they're not available. All that's available is a video of the August sixth meeting. The July seventh meeting from council is also not available, which I'm kind of concerned why these minutes aren't available to the public. And also in the August sixth meeting, the lady by the name of Heather, I didn't catch her last name, a contract specialist, used a technical proposal and spy staff member scored each of these three bids. Under this, there was the general experience, experience and qualifications, method of approach, public education and outreach, billing and customer service, clarity and thoroughness of proposal. Of those, only I feel three are really of important value. Experience and qualification is important, billing and customer service is important, clarity and thoroughness of proposal. Under the experience and qualification, there was no mention of the D.O.T. safety rating of each of these companies. These are trucking companies. They do waste management, but these are trucking companies, they have a D.O.T. safety rating. No mention of that. How many accidents have they had? Safety rating is important. Thank you.
Chad Middlestead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chad Middlestead, work for Republic Services at forty-fifty South Tomahawk Road. To clarify some of these, this misinformation about the proposal that we've issued, the rate that we've proposed is much lower than the current rates that are out there in open market, considerably lower, you know, anywhere from five to ten, it depends on what you're paying now, but it's considerable savings. And the way we get that is, when a community like yours wants to consolidate this, you get that buying power. We get efficiencies by picking up every single house in a row and not passing by and picking them up here, there, or another. You know, saving this money, it'd be cheaper for all the residents, they're also going to get some additional services. We're going to offer a bulk pickup included in that price for once a month, you know? Residents can call, and, you know, they have something extra they need to pick up, we're going to pick that up. So they're getting some benefits there, based on your decisions, you know, to go this route. Annual increases, I've seen those talked about online. We're using a C.P.I. index as kind of the framework that we're talking about. If you look at the averages over the last ten years, we're looking anywhere from two and a half to three and a half percent based on those. We don't have any control of it, the city doesn't have any control of it. At the end of that eight years, the rate is still going to be considerably lower than it is today in open market, so thank you for your time.
George Schroder.
Name and address again? Two-four-four West Virginia Street, George Schroder. There's good and bad. We finally got an annexation. Wow. I, I, I am so proud of this. Now we're going to expand our city limits, more, more revenue, more, more options for housing, more business, south of Elliott, all the way down to twenty-four, in case you don't know what I'm talking about, okay? I'm in contact with Lisa Atkins, county managers, everyone. It's going to be great. Good. This Curtis family, I don't know where you got them from, but they didn't have anything to do with A.J. to do with AJ, okay? See how King's stepfather did. He only, he had the only gambling house and adult massage parlor within 45 miles. So if anything had anything to do with building AJ, that was it. The only one. Now, our street, it's still, now it's a racetrack. It was good that way, good that way, but made Virginia worse, wiped out my front yard again. Really? Hmm. It's not the trucks taking my street away. It's 45 years of having done nothing, not one thing, to our streets to improve them. That's, all of you except Mr. Schroder, do something, because I know some people who want to, and it won't be good for the city. Now, our garbage problem. Our city manager brought it up in cahoots with Zach, general manager from Republic, and it is cahoots. Recently, I learned, like yesterday, that the city has approved a low budget, but by Republic, which you're going to accept and go with. I have a person who worked on the board for Republic. He's not saying what you're saying, okay? So this is terrible. This is federal bid rigging, at the very least. It has been set up and set up and set up by Mr. Powell. I'm not attacking. It's on record. He's the one who produced it, associated it, brought it up, forwarded it. He's the one who did it. This is fraud, and as the lady said, you can't monopolize. You can't do it. And if you do, somebody's going to jail.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. My name's Jim Gruen. I work for Republic Services located at 4050 South Tomahawk Drive. Forgive me if you've heard that already tonight. Wanted to touch on a couple of things you have no doubt been aware of through some of this conversation. Members of our team touched on much of this, but I really wanted to point out that we are truly proud to be the exclusive haulers in other communities in the valley, to include the City of Buckeye, Fountain Hills, and Superior. All right? We have a long-term history of partnership with those communities, and in all three cases, those municipalities have chosen to extend our contracts beyond their initial term. All right? We invite you, Members of Council, and also the members of the public in attendance and watching the livestream, to reach out to friends and family who may live in those communities to inquire about our level of service. Specifically, a couple of things I'd like to address through observing some of the discourse. We've seen a lot of concerns surrounding the potential loss of employment, loss of jobs related to the award of this contract. You know, the good news in this scenario is that there are still 14,000 homes in Apache Junction, and they will need to be serviced. All three of the bidding haulers currently have at least three open driver positions posted on their website as of about 8:00 this morning, so there are positions available for any employees who should be displaced by this potential contract. Lastly, wanted to talk a little bit about the letter, and probably the most concerning thing or alarming thing to me about that letter was while they were very willing to make your contact information available, whoever put that letter together, they did not, however, provide any way, shape, or form to get in touch with them. That's in contrast to what I would like to point out, which is every member of the Republic Services team identify themselves as such. We are here to talk about this with the public. We will be available for those questions, should they have any, and we look forward to the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments or responses? Start with Robin.
I'd like one of the multiple members of Republic to talk to Stacy wherever she may be, because obviously she has a problem with Republic, and you might be able to clear that up for her. Thank you.
Keep coming this way?
No.
Krista?
Yeah, I did. I got to go through my notes real quick.
Move your microphone over.
Got to go through the notes really quick. There was a concern about Health and Human Services in the community. The city provides funding to several of the local nonprofits. I can't, I don't, I don't remember where the lady went, if she left, but I'm going to say it anyway. The city provides funding through Health and Human Services Board.
She's right here in the corner behind Tom.
No, no, it was a different, it was a different lady.
It was Stacy.
But although the city itself does not provide these services, we have several organizations in our community that does. Hope Women's Center, CAFSA, we have our food bank, we have our soup kitchen. There are several organizations that are helping homeless, that are helping feed people, that are helping with domestic violence, so we do have some of those services. And I've got way too many notes. That was the one I wanted to touch.
The water.
We'll, we'll get, I'll address that if no one else does.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah. Gail.
I was going to ask Brian if you could talk to Harley about his $4,000 water bill. He must be very clean by this point, but, and also, I'd like to thank all of the people from Republic that came tonight to speak. The letter that went out was so, first of all, I don't give credit to anything that's not signed.
Amen.
It's sort of like the keyboard, keyboard cowboys on Facebook that want to say anything at all as though it's factual, and it's not. For the Republic employees to come and speak to us tonight, I think that took an awful lot of courage, because at one point it sounded more like a mob might be here tonight instead of people who were actually interested in finding out about what we're doing. I wanted to also address Stacy and the social issue, and I'll be happy to speak with her afterwards, and Trinity about the power of attorney as well.
Yeah.
I don't know how else to say that other than...
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just counting the requests for services, or, excuse me, requests for speak in the aspect that wanted to talk about the trash. There was 14 of them, as you saw. Not all 14 of them stayed in the aspect on it. And hopefully that they will look at the, I would say, view our city council meetings in the past as well as current ones, and will attend in the future to when we discuss this more in more detail in the future. Truth is what needs to be looked at, not necessarily half-trues and innuendos as to what is going on here. We're trying to do the best we can for the community, and that's one of our goals.
Oh, and one further thing, about the minutes not being available for Terry, could we check out?
Yeah, so the case of the August 6 minutes, because we didn't have the second set of meetings in August, they were adopted tonight, so they'll be posted. We don't post minutes until, though, that was video.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we can't really answer the question tonight, so.
Good try, Matt.
Good try.
Check into it.
Well, I did.
Good try.
So, okay. So I want to commend everybody for sitting through this long, boring meeting, and Stacy and Harley should have stuck around, because we do address everybody. I don't know, Ken, Harley gave his address, so we can track him down, and...
Yeah, he did get, we can get his address. I, yeah, we can get it.
And like I mentioned about this long, boring meeting, and just for example, if we're not doing anything, it's maybe getting the news out, but on this art, for instance, we've been talking about it since last October, and it's going to go way beyond October. It's going to be over a year of discussion, which is the same way that we did with this trash contract. So we did, if you do go back, you'll notice that we asked a lot of the questions that you folks asked, and, and it's still going to be discussed more, if not in the next meeting than the following. And so if there's any suggestions on how, I'll be willing to listen to you folks, how can we get the word more out on what goes on in these meetings other than newspapers or on the city website? I mean, we're a spread-out community. We don't have a central downtown. Everybody lives here from baseline up to McKellup, so there's a lot of in-between there, so. And as for Trina, I think that sounds like the Attorney General of the state should look into that. If there's any way, Joel, if you could help with some suggestions on that with her. And like I said, we'll be down from here in a little bit. If anybody else wants to continue talking, we'll be around for more questions. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.